Okay.
For the minutes?
I thought we had done roll call, did we not? Okay, that's right, alright. Okay, commissioners, on the approval of the minutes as submitted, we'll call the roll and please answer.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, minutes were approved as submitted, thank you. If you are here for item number two under our agenda, agenda to rezone from R4 to C4 to allow for a commercial business at 5101 McClanahan Drive, that item has been postponed, it will not be heard today. With that, we'll move right into our public hearing. Our first item on the agenda is public hearing number twenty-
Subdivision report. Development Review Committee report.
Public hearing is first on our agenda.
Good, oh, that's right. Okay.
Our public hearing is number 2020-13 to allow a hillside cut at 3901 JFK. Mr. Spencer, would you bring that?
We're holding a public hearing per our ordinance. The City Engineer can come up and give a little background on it, the applicant is here, and is anybody in the audience here to speak on this? Do we have any phone calls? No, yeah, we didn't.
No phone calls were received.
Just to give a real quick overview, Chris, and for anybody watching at home.
Just to summarize, this is a project-
Please give us your name for the record, please.
I'm sorry, I'm Chris Wilber, I'm the Chief City Engineer for-
Thank you.
This is a project, it's along JFK in the Park Hill District. It's property that was purchased by Hogs Meat Market and it's, the property was part of the old school, it's up on Park Hill. The site plan, the engineers for the project were Thomas, for the developer, it's Thomas Engineering, and the, as following, our hillside, it is a hillside cut, but the grades on the, on the job are all less than four to one, which in some respects takes us a little bit outside of, but, but because they flattened the site, they required a retaining wall in the back. That retaining wall varies from seven to 10 feet tall. They've done some preliminary geotechnical work. We will require full submittal of the design calculations on it. It's a mechanically stabilized earth wall and, which is very common, and the engineer for that is Scott Miller. So, all notifications, to my knowledge, have been sent out, and we find that Thomas Engineering is following all the regulations that we require.
Thank you, Mr. Wilber. Have we received any comments from anyone else into the office about this?
Zero calls on this.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing? Then we will-
This Steve.
I'm sorry?
Steve White.
Steve White.
Mr. White, yes.
For some reason, I didn't get anything on, on that. Tell me where this hillcut is gonna be again?
It, it's located in Park Hill. To give, Sean, give me a-
Just north of the school, across from the little, the strip center.
There you go.
Part of the Park Hill Elementary School project.
Okay.
And it's down next to where the break shop is.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I got it now. My question would be with all the problems that we had down at the other shopping center down the street with the hillside cut, are we gonna, are we gonna put a barrier in or will it be just a soil or dirt barrier?
Yeah, it will be a, the retaining wall is a structural component of the project, whereas down at the other site, originally there was no wall.
Right, and this wall will be made of what, blocks, rocks, concrete?
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's segmented blocks with a reinforced earth, very common for this size, and, and again, the, unlike the other site, the wall here is only eight to 10 feet tall.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir, this is a question for the project engineer.
Give us your name for the record, please.
John Poundell, Thomas Engineering.
Mr. Poundell, the break shop abuts this property, and it's a cut along that edge. Do y'all plan to remove any residual berm or hill between the break shop and this project? Smooth, smooth the grade out, in other words, between the two properties?
Well, there's not much grade difference between that when we get finished. There, there, most of the retaining wall starts after the break shop. We'll be matching grade pretty close in that area, and there'll be a slight grade change, but it won't require any retaining walls.
I didn't figure, I don't see any retaining walls in the plan, I just didn't know if it was gonna be a smooth grade between the two.
That's correct.
Mutual agreement between the properties to smooth the grade out?
Right, yes, there won't be much grade difference there, but there will be a little slope, but not much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, many other commissioners, any comments, anyone in the audience? Do we need to carry this over?
Close the public hearing.
Did someone speak?
I moved, I moved for approval.
Move for approval?
It's second.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, this be approved. We need, we do need to have a roll call vote on this. Mr. Rivers?
And someone else has called in, I need to know which commissioner is on the line.
I think it might be me.
Thanks, Mandy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I couldn't get the, I couldn't get it to come up on Zoom, probably something I did wrong, but anyway.
Okay, we got you now, thank you. Please call the roll on the, on the motion.
Belasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. The motion did pass, and so we will call this public hearing to end with the motion passing. Next order of business is our Design Development Review Committee, Mr. Don Chambers, the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Development Review Committee met and considered item A, SD 2020-15 Seahawk Transportation Edition Lot 1, replant and site plan review at 8026 Raines Road. Applicant was present and agreed to items one through 10 and subsections, and the Design Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, this application be approved as submitted. Any comments, many commissioners, any comments, many one in the audience on this application? Would you please call the roll?
Belasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass.
Next item is SD 2020-18 Dupree subdivision lots one and two, residential lot split at 119 Whitehead Drive. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through five and subsections, and the Design Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Are there any comments from any of the commissioners? Would you please call the roll on this application?
Belasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass.
Item C is SD 2020-19 West Commercial Subdivision Block 2, lots 4A and 4B replant of a commercial lot split. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through seven and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Are there any comments from any of the commissioners? Would you please call the roll on the application, please?
Belasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass.
Next item is SD 2020-17 AC Lewis Edition Lots 1 and 2, replant and site plan review at 701 North Palm Street. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through 12 as revised, and the following, and the revisions are, item one, it was deleted because it has been done, item B provide, has been deleted, provide a 10-foot easement along Range Line Avenue, item E was deleted, existing building to meet all commercial codes, and it was replaced with, the existing building is to be used only as storage, item I, 8I, is deleted, provide a full buffer between dissimilar uses or zoning, because there are no dissimilar uses or zoning, and item C was added, the gate is to meet the requirements of the fire marshal. Did I get that correct, staff? Okay. And with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, this application be approved as submitted and amended. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? Please call the roll.
Belasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, your application did pass.
Next item is SD 2020-20 Park Hill Edition Block 51, Lots 17 and 18, replant and site plan review of Hogs Meat Market at 3901 JFK Boulevard. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through 13 and subsections, and the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, and seconded, that this application be approved as submitted. Are there any comments from anyone in the audience on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? Please call the roll.
Belasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, your application did pass.
That concludes the Development Review Committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. We will move into our next order of business under public hearings. Item number two of public hearings will be special use case number 2020-7 to allow an event center in a C4 zone at 5301 Warden Road, unit number one. Is the applicant here? Please, please come up and give us your name for the record, please.
My name's Renita Noble, and I own Noble Events.
Okay, Ms. Noble, at the, at the previous meeting we had, there was some discussion going on about some of the items that were recommended and asked. So... Give me just a minute to look at this, I have not seen this yet. There was some discussion about the amount of parking spaces.
Yes, sir.
And how they would relate to the other tenants in the property. And we do have a letter from General Properties stating that all of these 43 parking spaces would be available to you. Is that still, is that still to be?
Yes, sir, as well as, they own the whole plot of land, so the Northeast Business Center actually has 88 parking spaces, and they have stated in the letter, that's the additional attachment that I gave you, that if I need additional parking, I can always use what's available at the Northeast Center.
Okay, there was also discussion about the fire sprinkler requirements. What, what has transpired with that?
Okay, the, um, um... Came with me to look at each office space and measured it, and I also have an attachment of the, Attachment A, and so when he did the measurements, it was under, of course, I knew it was already gonna be under the 300, so if you have under 300 people, then you don't have to have the sprinkler system. But the way we came, I came to 215 in the letter that came from planning, said 225, well, when you total it all square footage-wise, you can have 225 people. But we also called, back to planning, talked to someone in the plumbing section, and there's two bathrooms, so that limits also what we can have to make it 225, and with only 43 parking spaces technically, then the square, then I could only have capacity for 215. And that's kinda how I came at the 215 instead of the 225.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Noble. In, in review of these items that were discussed at the Design Review Committee and the information that she's came up and provided, what is staff's recommendation for this?
Staff still has concerns about just the parking. It's crowded now, you know, the neighbors are currently parking on it from the Plasma Center, and they're, they have a lease, and that will be broken for this allow, but, you know, there's other businesses there that, you know, they need to be using those, those spots also, so if, if there was an event that, you know, took all 215 people there, you know, where are the other businesses going to park? So it's just, it's just a, it's already a tight situation out there, and then adding this, so it, you know, if, if the event is held at 8 o'clock at night, we're fine, because other businesses will be closed. So, but it's, it'd be an event during the day where there's other businesses open, and, you know, they also have the same right to use those 80-some spaces as she does, so it's, it's just a tough situation, and with the neighborhood right behind it, we shouldn't be possibly, you know, pushing vehicles into the neighborhood to park.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spencer. Ms. Chambers?
I wish the image that we're looking at on the screen could zoom out a little bit more, and I believe it would show that there's also not convenient, but more remote parking available in the area to this basically warehouse district. And I think that what the applicant and the landlord and the existing businesses are gonna find is, through proper communication, that, you know, we plan to have an event on this day, does anyone have any problem, anyone planning anything big that day and all, I believe it's possible for everybody to get along just fine, and if there's ever a problem, the landlord will say, you know, this is too big a bite for us to chew off, and you need to find someplace else to go to because you need too much parking and we can't provide that here. I think it's gonna be a landlord-tenant agreement on getting together and finding happiness.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Yes.
Uh, I wanna-
Mr. Foster?
Concur with Mr. Chambers' comments there, and if, if this does pass with our approval tonight, with City Council approval later, I sure hope the applicant and, and like he said, the landlord do understand that the parking is gonna be challenging, and, you know, just because you have a letter here from General Properties that says the event center has 43 spaces, spaces available, that doesn't mean they're exclusive, 43 spaces available to the event center, they're gonna be shared, and, you know, I'm all pro-business, and I wish them well in that endeavor. So I just want to go on record, it is our planning commissioner and my comments being that, like Mr. Chambers said, parking is gonna be a big issue here, and it's gonna take some coordination and planning, and, you know, I think the thing that the event center have going for it is gonna be after business hours, but, you know, who's to know that somebody in the future is gonna open up a restaurant and a bar at the, next door to this event center that's gonna even more make a challenging of the parking, so I just wanted to make sure that the tenant understands that thoroughly. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve-
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Mr. White?
Yes. Hey, Tim or Sean, tell me real quick on, on looking at my, on, on the page, okay, 5121B is what?
That's the Plasma Center.
Alright, and 5107, that's Hogs Meat Market, that's Hogs Restaurant in the far left.
The whole hog, yes.
Oh, I mean Ho-Hog, I'm sorry, I apologize. Alright, here's my opinion, there's already a major crisis parking because of the Plasma Center anyway. They already are taking up all the parking, there's a sign in the shopping center that says you will be hauled off, I don't know how the shopping center is gonna determine what car is at the event center versus at the Plasma Center. The Plasma Center parks all the way down, they park sideways, and even now, there's a problem with parking on McClanahan, on the side of the street where the mini storage is, and the, and that, that is, because I drive through there a lot, and that's impeding traffic already. So like Mr. Foster said, this is after hours, there's not gonna be a problem, but we already have a major problem there anyway, and it's called the Plasma Center, is what it's called, because they park everywhere. And so even though the, the shopping center said they could use there, there's a big sign that says cars will be towed off, and so how are they gonna know whose car is who, right there? So I think, I think the applicant is gonna have a few of her clients towed off right off the bat. Plus, they just opened up a couple of additional businesses in there that's gonna take up some of the parking that wasn't taken up three months ago. So I, I do not think parking is adequate, and I think you're gonna have a major issue on the highway there, a major issue down the side of McClanahan, and I think you're gonna have a major issue in that shopping center, because the Plasma Center is out of control.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Mr. White.
Mr. Chairman?
There's another person?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Charlie Foster.
Mr. Foster?
What, what Mr. White is kinda describing to me is, is what we're gonna, what we're developing here or creating here is almost like an urban central business district situation, almost like if this, you know, development was occurring in downtown Argenta, where parking is no parking, you know, and you have, you know, just, I think the tenant needs to understand that some of her clients may not be able to park at her front door, and what that, that impact on her business may not be what she wants, but like we said, it's an event center after hours. Just wanna make sure our, our applicant is fully aware of the situation, and we are aware of the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. We have these-
This is Mr. White. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. White?
Yeah, we're getting ready to make, and I'm not against the event center, but we're getting ready to make a big problem worse, because we already have a major problem there, and it's just gonna make it worse. And so I, I can't support it, because it's, I mean, it's already a nightmare there.
Okay.
And parking is, it's just, it's not gonna work, these people at the Plasma Center, they park everywhere.
Okay, thank you, Mr. White.
That's the reason my farmer's insurance moved out, or the insurance company there moved out, is what I was told.
Okay. The-
And then we have a pawn shop there, by the way.
Okay. The regulations that we have in place for these type of parking places is there for a reason, and just because the owner of the business park has okayed using every one of those spaces for one tenant, as I've said, when we first started looking at this application, I foresee a huge problem. Of course, if it passes and goes ahead and goes forward, the problem is not going to be a problem until it is a problem. And when it becomes that problem, then you're gonna get probably law enforcement involved in it and things like that, so I think that it's our duty to try to foresee anything that might come upon us like that, and try our best to use good judgment and prevent something like that. So that's my comment on it. Any other comments, anyone in the audience like, have any comments on this? Mr. Chambers?
Uh, yes, sir, just, I have, looking at the special use photograph, and the entire shopping center is in gray, and, you know, if some of her clients had to park afar, as far away as 5305, units E1 and E through E4, that would be the cost of doing business. It may be that in, in a year or so, she determines that this is not the best location, but I believe that the parking will work out between the landlord, the Plasma Center, and the, the new tenant. The way I read the new handout is that there's a letter in here that says that the Octapharma Plasma Inc. leases 13 parking spaces in front of the H Building on a month-to-month basis, and General Properties Inc. will give a 30-day written notice to vacate said spaces. Doesn't sound to me like, just reading between the lines, that they have a really good relationship currently with their landlord. currently with their landlord. You may wake up a month from now and find out they found a better place to be. So, I'm, I'm not anxious to tell this applicant no, and then 30 days from now, circumstances change, and she has all the parking she needs. So, I'm going to say, let's, let's let the applicant have a chance, and she and the landlord and the businesses there can work it out.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Ms. Noble?
Yes. If you look at attachment C, the additional handout that I gave you, those are all the spaces that are owned by General Properties. General Properties also owns the shopping center that the barbecue place is in. So, they own all of that. And yes, they do have signs up that say that the Plasma Center can't park there because there is a problem. I guess if, and also, based on attachment A, that says how many people I can actually have in the venue is not going to be 215. That's the square footage for the whole building. The actual banquet room only holds 64 if it's tables and chairs, and 133 if it's theater style. So, the parking really won't be a problem if I use the ones that are in front of the building as well as behind H1. And, you know, for me, as a business owner, and I've been a business owner in North Little Rock for a while, the precedence has been set, too, that we have a lot of venues, events, restaurants, that don't have sufficient parking. Anything that comes new on Main Street in North Little Rock, if the, if the arena has something at the arena, then the North Little Rock Chamber, who is also a venue, has to share their parking with them, and it narrows their parking down to only 30 spaces. So, I guess for me, you're saying you're foreseeing some things that could happen, but there are some things that are already happening, and I don't feel like I should be penalized for some things that are already going on in the city of North Little Rock.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Noble. Any other comments from any of the commissioners on the application? Please call the roll.
Belasco. Chambers.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips. Wallace.
Yes.
White.
No.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. You will, if you would get with Mr. Spencer, he can tell you what you might do next. You'll need to get an alderman to sponsor this for the city council, and I would like to commend you very much, Ms. Noble, for a very professional package and presentation that you made.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I might add, if you're invited to an event at Noble Events, I suggest you get there early.
Hey, that's right. Okay. Item number three postponed, the one at 5101 McClanahan has been postponed. Item number four, under public hearings, is 2020-1, to update the North Little Rock zoning ordinance. Mr. Spencer?
Just to give you a little update, we'll be putting in the mail tomorrow to all the commissioners, the, hopefully, the final version of the zoning book. So, from what you guys received last time, there's just very minor changes made to it from the city attorney's office, and so, we're hopefully at our, our final vote, or final review of it, and ask for a vote at the June meeting, and send it to city council at the second, whatever the second meeting in June is, late, late June. So, if you, once you receive it in the mail, if you have any questions or something, give, give us a call, and we'll try to respond to those questions and get, get it updated or have a discussion on it or something.
You are going to email or mail one out before the June meeting finalized?
Tomorrow.
But not tomorrow. There'll be finalized, that what the, one is you're presenting for the June meeting?
Yes.
For passage?
Correct.
So, we expect to get the finalized version of it?
Correct. It will go in the mail tomorrow morning.
Okay. Anyone in the audience like to speak on this public hearing? Any comments from any of the commissioners? Mr. Chambers?
I've been working with staff on the flat materials lists and things like that, and that'll likely be a continuing tweak right on up till the point where we vote on it. So, but there's just things like species and such that change continuously.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Yes. Maybe I couldn't understand, Mr. Chambers, but was that in reference to the Airbnb?
No, sir.
We had, we had some comments about our zoning ordinance as it relates to that, and we were waiting to, I don't remember, Fayetteville or Bentonville was going through that process and had some, you know, good take on zoning regulations. I didn't know if any of that had been reviewed and incorporated into the revisions to our zoning ordinance. Staff, can you comment?
So, Mr. Foster, the, it's, it's in Fayetteville.
Fayetteville, yes, sir.
Yeah. So, it's currently on hold at Fayetteville until they can hold public meetings, I guess. I'm not sure how their commission and everything's doing it, but it's on hold up there. So, we're sort of waiting to see how, how all that comes out, but the Airbnb will not be part of the zoning ordinance. It will be a standalone ordinance on its own. But, you know, we have their copy, and we're, we're working with it, so it's just, we're sort of going to wait to see what happens up north before, before we do something with it.
So, it's not a part of this zoning?
It will, yeah.
It's not a part of this zoning?
Yeah. It will not be part of it.
Okay. My second question is, you know, I read in the paper the other day about Little Rock making some adjustments to their zoning ordinance, and my take on what they were trying to do is make the zoning review, development review process permitting and that kind of thing a little more streamlined and friendly to developers. Has that been reviewed by staff, and anything there that we may need to consider?
From the, what I read in the paper, we're not, I mean, one thing, they eliminated the subdivision committee. So, I, so, yeah. You're out of a job. So, but, we weren't, yeah, there was nothing in there that we were excited about using for ours. So, at the moment, I, we're pretty streamlined down, you know, we're to a month and a half to review a project and get a building permit. So, we're, it's, we're going pretty good right now.
Okay. Well, you know, I've made comments that maybe not in our meetings, but to you and other members of your staff there about streamlining our review, and there's a lot of items that I feel like are brought before our Design Review Committee that could be done at staff level without our review. Do we need to give that some more consideration?
Between the, the new zoning ordinance and then the current subdivision is being rewritten as we speak, we'll have that process going. So, it's, it's in motion, but it's going to take two documents for us to do it, the zoning book and the subdivision book.
Okay. That's great. That's great. Just want to, want that to slide down the river with us?
No, it's, it's being worked on.
So... Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Good job.
So, what Mr. Foster has asked about will be addressed in the new subdivision regulations?
Correct.
And the new zoning ordinance that we're going to be looking at in June?
Correct. Yes. So, the, part of, part of the issue with, was a lot of the subdivision stuff was placed into the zoning book. So, it's going to be separated out, and the, the streamlining would be in the subdivision part, not necessarily what's in the zoning book.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Are we going to be, you kind of confused me there a little bit, Chairman. Will that be part of the consideration in June, the subdivision?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
No.
But the way I see it, Mr. Chairman, is that it'll be a matter of just natural course, that as these two documents are separated, reviewed, and reapproved, that subsequent administrative procedures will change to fit them and will begin, become more streamlined as they change. So, it's, it's a product of a change, of, of our changing our zoning and subdivision ordinances. It's a good thing. It's going to work out well.
Okay. We will, we will be anxiously awaiting to see how it works. Okay. Anyone have a public comment? We are so thankful to have our city attorney with us today, Ms. Amy Phillips.
I'm very happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Any other comments?
Who to adjourn?
Motion made and seconded, we adjourn. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Should we call the roll? Thank you all.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Goodbye. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.